This month's session, the Planning Program Zoning Commission Meeting. The first item on the agenda is approval of the August 4, 2015 agenda. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we're moved by Carol and seconded that we approve the minutes, I'm sorry, pardon me, the agenda for today's meeting on August 4, 2015. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And we have an agenda. The next item on our order business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on July 7, 2015.
I move the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting on July 7.
Um, I would like to, before I do that, could we pause me on page three? I looked at, there's a spelling error, Attorney Gary Puppenheim, it's actually P-A-P-E-N-H-E-I-M. Sorry, Jerry.
No, that's good.
I had trouble finding that when I was looking it up, and it's P-A-P-E-N-H-E-I-M, and I think that was all that I caught.
My amended motion is to approve the amended minutes from our regular meeting on July 5.
Is there a second? Okay. It's been approved by Jerry and seconded that we approve the amended minutes of the regular meeting on July 7, 2015 with correctional on page three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved as amended. Our third item for today is the financial report, and that will be received and placed on file, and if we could have a report for the June 2015 report.
This is Anderson with staff, so the June 2015, that would be our end of the year, so we should be close to 100 percent. As you go through each of the line items, we're a little ways over, a little ways under in the majority of the categories. Overall, we ended up bringing up a little bit more in revenue than we were projecting, and a little bit less in expenses, so a good year for planning.
Any discussion? Okay, we will receive and place on file the financial report for June 2015. Here, our next item of business is oral presentations. This would be for any items not mentioned on today's agenda. If there is any new item that is not mentioned on today's agenda, we would ask you to approach a podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, you haven't seen them, we'll move along to new business. Our first item under new business is hearings. We'll be looking at rezones and site plan amendments. And our first one for today is a request by New Directions Counseling Services to rezone 0.61 acres from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ Conditional Zoning Multiple Residence District for the purpose of establishing a new professional office use on the property, and to expand existing parking lot located at 1310 Solo Drive. It begins on page one, and at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photo were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 23, 2015. Would you have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we receive and place this notice on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Staff report.
This is Anderson with staff. The applicant is requesting the rezone of the property for the purposes of establishing a professional office use for counseling services. It would appear that the proposed rezone would not have a negative impact upon the surrounding area and land uses. There are heavier commercial uses located to the south along Blackhawk Road. The applicant recently purchased the building at 1310 Solar Drive, which once belonged to Exceptional Persons Incorporated and was used as a group home. Also, the applicant is purchasing the north 32 feet from the neighboring property owner to the south at 822 Blackhawk Road for purposes of expanding the parking area. Proposed rezone is served by Solar Drive from the north and south, and Blackhawk Road from the east and west, both of which are classified as local streets. Would appear that the surrounding transportation network could accommodate traffic created by the proposed use. There is some sidewalks within the immediate surrounding area located to the north along Lunar Lane. Would appear that there is a sufficient amount of right-of-way along Solar Drive and other nearby streets to extend sidewalk, and sidewalks should be required as a condition of the approval. Nearest recreational trail is along the west side of Ainsborough Avenue to the west. Also, the Sarge Road recreational trail is located along northwest from the side of Highway 63 at its intersection with Fletcher Avenue. Proposed rezone area is zoned R3 Multiple Residence District and has been zoned as such since the adoption of the zoning ordinance. Other surrounding land uses and their zoning are as follows: to the north, single-family residences, zoned R3; south, single-family residences, zoned R3; east, single-family residences, zoned R3; and west, multiple-family residences, zoned R3. Rezoning of the land in question would not require any buffering or screening, however, expansion of the existing parking would require additional screening. Zoning ordinance requires that all open parking spaces containing more than four spaces shall be effectively screened as defined in the ordinance on each side adjoining properties situated in a residence district or any institutional premises, except when the adjoining property is used for professional offices or multifamily by a wall or densely planted compact hedge, except at the closest point of such parking area is at least 100 feet from the nearest residential or institutional property line or across the street. Due to the applicant wanting to expand the parking area southward towards a single-family use located at 822 Blackhawk Road, a screen will be need to be established. The zoning ordinance defines a screen as "a wall or fence or area of planting that provides an effective visual barrier." For a single row, the screen shall consist of spruce, firs, or pines spaced at a maximum spacing of 15 feet, or a double-staggered row of spruce, spurs, or pines spaced at a maximum of 20 feet with each row. For aravita and juniper, the spacing shall be a double-staggered row with a maximum spacing of 10 feet within each row, or a single-family row with a maximum spacing of 10 feet. In the case of a wall or fence, it shall be solid with a minimum height of at least six feet. In the case of plantings, the maximum, the minimum height shall be four feet at the time of the planting. Alternative plantings and spacings may be approved by the city planner or designee and still constitute a screen. Applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 0.61 acres from R3 to R3 CZ for the purpose of establishing that professional office for counseling services. The property was previously used as a group home. The square footage of the existing building is 6,000 square feet, and the zoning ordinance requires for a professional office that there be one parking stall for every 300 square feet of floor area, which would equate to a total of 20 parking stalls needed for this professional office use. The submitted site plan in the packet does show a total of 25 parking stalls on the site, with one being provided for handicap access. Proposed parking lot expansion has a setback of 5.0107 feet from the south property line, which would meet the required setback of five feet. Would also appear that the parking lot setbacks from all other property lines are approximately five to six feet. It is staff's recommendation that the request to rezone from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ Conditional Zoning District be approved for the following reasons: Proposed rezone area is in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which designate this area as mixed residential, which allows for low, medium, and high-density residential, professional offices, neighborhood commercial, and the proposed rezoning would be in conformance with this designation, and that the rezone area is located within the primary growth area; Two, the site in question would appear to provide sufficient space to meet all required regulations, including setbacks, drainage, landscaping, etc. And three, requests would not appear to have negative impact upon the surrounding area, with the conditions that, one, that the use be limited to a counseling services use or any use permitted in the R3 Multiple Residence District, or any professional office use permitted in the R4 District; and two, that sidewalk is installed along the property in question and connecting to the existing sidewalk along Lunar Lane.
Okay, questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, for those who would like to speak for or against this, we would ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Members of the commission should also state their name before speaking to the microphone. Seeing there is none, I'll turn it back to the commission for either final words or a motion.
I do have one question for staff. This is Thornsberry. It says in here that the, under drainage, that the applicant must submit a stormwater detention plan. Shouldn't that be a part of the conditions?
This is Anderson with staff, I can answer it. That will actually cause them to have an engineer to have to design it and all that, so generally they're looking to get through the rezoning type process before they'd actually spend a lot more money to have an engineer design it. It's still going to be required that they meet the stormwater ordinance requirements, but we don't generally see that level of detail at this, at this time.
Thank you.
But it can be a condition.
It could be a condition that they have.
How much site plan meets all of it?
Yeah, normally we have that one in there that says all, meets all that applicable, so.
This is Mark, that might actually answer my question, because the discussion on the screen says that because they're going to expand the parking, the screen's going to be required, but it's not a condition. So, same answer?
I just wrote that one in there as well.
Okay. The sidewalk installed along the property line, is there a time limit to comply with that? And then what's the means for follow-up to make sure it happens?
Eric Schrader, City Planner, that would be required as part of the permitting process, and then timeline would be before final completion and certificate of occupancy of the facility and the engineering department. Any permit that gets obtained for sidewalks, they have inspection process, both, I think their primary ones, when it's formed up and before they actually pour this.
Any other questions for staff or discussion? I'll turn it over for a motion from the commission.
I'd make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Davis and seconded we close the hearing at this time. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the hearing is closed. Okay, any final thoughts or a motion from the commission?
I move that we approve the rezone of approximately 0.61 acres of land located at 1310 Solar Drive from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ Conditional Zoning District with the following conditions: that the use be limited to counseling services use or any use permitted under R3 Multiple Residence District, or any professional office use permitted in the R4 Multiple Residence District; and two, that the sidewalk is installed along the property in question and connecting to the existing sidewalk along Lunar Lane, and that the stormwater detention plan and the screen, buffering screening be a part of the conditions when it is approved.
Second. Which of you ladies would like to second?
I'll take it.
Okay, so we're moved by Jerry and seconded that we approve the request to rezone from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ with the condition stated in the packet for the use, so the R3 Multiple Residence District, professional building in there, that the sidewalk is installed along the property in question, and the addition of the stormwater detention plan and the screening approval.
Wait, I have one more question. Sorry to interrupt. I just noticed the original documents reference it was EPI, not PPI. Do we need to change that? Does it matter?
Which document was it?
On six, it says PPI, and in the staff report, it said it was owned by EPI, not PPI. Does it matter?
We can definitely make sure that's all correct.
Is it EPI?
It's EPI.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And motion passes. Okay, the timeout is 4:16. Our next order business under hearings is a request by Mark, and please forgive me if I mispronounced your name, sir, Mark Rayer, for a site plan amendment in the M2P Plan Industrial District to allow for the development of a new 147-unit mini-storage facility located along the west side of Tyson Drive just south of 501 North Elk Run Road. That begins on page nine, and at this time, we should receive and place on file the statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photo were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 23, 2015. And may I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Davis and seconded that we have this motion received and placed this notice on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, staff report.
This is Graham with staff. The applicant is requesting approval of the site plan amendment in the M2P Plan Industrial District. This would allow for the development of a new 147-unit mini-storage facility on this property. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. This is, the surrounding land use is mainly industrial in nature, it is located within the Northeastern Industrial Park. Request would not appear to have any negative impacts on traffic, as the property is located right off of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, which is a four-lane road. The fire marshal has indicated that the code requires a 28-foot turning radius for emergency vehicles on the property, and the site plan only shows a 24-foot turning radiuses, and the applicant may need to alter the site plan in order to meet that requirement. Drainage, if approved, the applicant will need to submit a drainage and detention plan to the engineering department prior to issuance of any building permits. Staff is somewhat concerned with how the drainage plan will work with the proposed zero-foot parking setbacks. Utilities, there is a 16-foot, or 16-inch water main located along the south side of MLK Jr. Drive, but there is no sanitary sewer located anywhere adjacent to this property. The fire marshal has indicated that a fire hydrant will be required to be located a maximum of 400 feet away from this property. That will likely mean that a waterline extension and a hydrant placement will be required. The future land use map does designate this site as industrial, the proposed use would be in conformance with that designation. The applicant has submitted a site plan for the 1.78-acre property. It does show six separate mini-storage facilities, buildings on the site with a total of 147 units. Of those six different buildings, three would have 24 units, one would have 20 units, one would have 28, and then one would have 27. Each individual unit would be 10-foot by 20-foot, and it would be constructed with metal framing and metal siding. The site plan does show a 24-foot driving width between each of the buildings, which is shown to be paved with asphalt, and there are two existing field accesses from Tyson Drive to the existing farm field, and the southernmost access would be removed, and then one new access would be created for the business just south of that access. The site plan does show the vehicular use area to be paved with asphalt, however, the asphalt appears on the site plan to go right up to the property lines along the southwest and the north. The only area where there is not being shown any asphalt would be near the entrance to the facility, which would be grass. The zoning ordinance typically has a five-foot setback requirement from any vehicular use area to the property line, but this requirement can be varied upon approval of the site plan amendment. Staff does have some concern with the paving going right up to the property line, as that does not leave much area on the property for any greens, green space or landscaping. However, there are a line of trees on the west end of the property, on property which is owned by the city of Waterloo, as the MLK Drive, Jr. Drive right-of-way, which could provide a natural buffer and landscape area. Also, there's approximately 50-foot of right-of-way from the south property line to the actual roadway, where the applicant could potentially ask the city for permission to install some landscaping there as well. At this time, staff is recommending the request for site plan amendment to the M2P Plan Industrial District be approved for the following reasons: one, the request would appear to be compatible with the surrounding area, which is industrial in nature; and two, the request would appear to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area, and subject to the condition that the final site plan meet all applicable city codes, including but not limited to landscaping, drainage, etc., except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment.
Okay, questions for staff?
And so, this is Thornsberry. The statement except as was specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment, would that include the statement about the 28-foot turning radius and the drainage and detention plan?
No, that would, that's more regarding the parking setbacks. The drainage is part of the engineering code, and then the turning radius is part of the fire code.
So we don't have to state those?
Specify those.
Yeah, that's just something they have maybe.
Yeah, yeah, in specific, when I mentioned the except as approved, is yeah, the five-foot setback can be altered upon approval of the site plan.
And this, about one entrance not being asphalted at all, is that part of that?
I believe they were going to pave the entrance, that's a requirement.
But it's just not on the map now, the plan now?
Yeah, there's, the site plan does show one entrance. There's two existing field accesses now. They are proposing to close at least one of them, I don't know if they're planning to close both, but they would have just one paved access to the property.
Okay, help me understand then, under staff analysis zoning ordinance, third paragraph, second sentence. The only area where there is not being shown any asphalt would be near the entrance to the facility.
Right, when you, when you, yeah, it's grass. Once you enter the facility, there's grass on each side.
Okay.
Not vehi, yeah, not vehicular use area.
Thank you.
Right.
This is, oh, this is, I have a question about the stormwater detentions, and there's not enough, is that something that is in the plans to be addressed or fixed?
Yeah, I mean, at the technical review committee meeting, it was indicated that there wouldn't appear to be much room for a detention area, and that was relayed on to the applicant's engineer. I don't believe our office or the engineering office has seen a proposed drainage plan.
But it still would be required?
It would be required, yes.
So this is just a preliminary?
Right.
Okay.
And I also heard you say something about the fire marshal, so that the applicant would need to be responsible for paying for a fire hydrant to be put in? Does that need to be specified, or is that again another assumption?
Again, yeah, that's in the, that's in the code that they would have to provide.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, if anyone would like to speak for or against this request, we ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. We also ask any members of the commission, would state their name before speaking into the microphone. Seeing none, I would turn it back for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we close the hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the hearing is closed. I would turn this over to the commission for final thoughts, discussion, or a motion.
Really quick questions as well. So just to clarify, the fire marshal says these are 20-foot, 28-foot radius, turning radius, and in our packet, it says the applicant may need to alter the site plan. So, is it going to be required, or is that up to?
This is Schrader with staff. The turning radius that's shown on there wasn't really labeled, so we, we're estimating it's probably about a 24-foot radius, but that's, it's, there's not really enough detail to actually measure it. It's pretty clear that it's not a 28-foot radius, and because they are showing the, so the, the fire marshal indicated that they could probably get by with a fire lane with 28-foot radiuses around the perimeter, and because of the distances, as long as they can get a fire truck to a point that's within 150 feet of all points of the building, then they probably would not need to get fire lanes through the middles. But to get the 28-foot radius on the exterior, because they're already showing parking areas that are at zero lot line, it looks like it would probably be difficult to switch it to meet those 28-foot radiuses without shrinking the size of some of the buildings. They're showing 24-foot lanes, possibly they could go down to 20-foot lanes between some of the buildings that would technically meet minimum code requirements. It's pretty narrow for actually maneuvering in and out of garage doors if you've only got 20 feet between the buildings, though, so I don't know if they could really do that. The other requirement on the, the fire hydrant is, that it has to be within 400 feet of any point of a building. So yeah, there's probably going to have to be at least one fire hydrant located a ways up on Tyson Drive, so it'll be a sizable water main extension to get that fire hydrant to a point that would reach that requirement.
But so then, the staff recommendations, the conditions do not include ensuring those 28 feet? Am I reading that correctly?
It does, because the, the staff recommendation is subject to it meeting all
Oh, okay.
codes, and that would cover that, is a code requiring a fire code to have the 28-foot fire lane radius.
Thank you.
This is Thornsberry. Eric, is a, when you say city code, is that, is fire code underneath that?
Yes, the city codes covers all of the different codes, which includes building code, plumbing code, fire code, property maintenance code, zoning ordinance. I'm probably missing several, but yeah, all of those would fall under the city codes.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or discussion before vote? Okay, the motion is on table to approve the request to rezone from R3 Multiple Residence District to R3 CZ Conditional Zoning District. No, wait, wrong one, sorry. Flip the page. Sorry about that. I'm on the wrong page. There we go. Okay, let's do this again. Okay, there is a request to approve the request for a site plan amendment in the M2P Plan Industrial District to allow for the development of a new 147-unit mini-storage facility located along the west side of Tyson Drive, and including the conditions stated in the staff to be compatible surrounding area, which is industrial, and also to have the following conditions, that all applicable city codes, including but not limited to landscaping, drainage, etc., except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment. All those in favor say aye.
We don't have a motion.
What of a motion? Where is my brain today? I'm sorry. We have a motion on the table to approve or?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Jerry and seconded that we approve the request for the site plan amendment in the M2P 3 Plan Industrial District, including the final site plan conditions to meet all applicable city codes, including but not limited to landscaping, drainage, etc., except as specifically altered by approval of the site plan amendment. There we go. Okay, any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. I really don't know what happened there. Okay, back indication, moving on. Okay, our next item under hearings is a request by Lost Island Real Estate, LC, for a site plan amendment in the R4 RP Plan Multiple Residence District to allow for the development of a new residential subdivision generally located northwest of the intersection of East Shallows Road and Hess Road. This begins on page 19. And at this time, we should receive and place on file a statement of verification signed by Patty McGee stating aye. Patty McGee, do hereby certify that a copy of the attached letter, site plan, and aerial photos were mailed to each individual on the attached list by regular mail on July 23, 2015. And may I have a motion to receive and place this notice on file?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we place this motion, receive it, and place this on file. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. And the motion passes. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The applicant is requesting a site plan amendment to approximately 73 acres for 118 single-family dwellings. The proposed site plan area is zoned R1, one and two family residence district, R4 RP planned multiple residence district, and CP planned commercial district, and has been zoned such since August of 2010. The applicant is requesting that 2.58 acres of property be rezoned from CP planned commercial district to R4 RP. The applicant, as noted, the site plan amendment consists of approximately 73 acres of land and it is proposed to be subdivided into 118 residential lots. The applicant has indicated that the land, or that the area will be single-family homes. Two access points are shown from East Shallows Road. Angus Drive, which is located to the west within Guernsey addition, would not be extended or connected to the area with the proposed site plan amendment. The site plan shows a 30-foot front yard setback for all proposed properties with a 10-foot utility easement. Tracks B and F are reserved for storm sewer and drainage and tracks A, C, and D are common tracks and will be future, or will be developed as future private parts. Track E will be privately owned parcel. The applicant recently went to the planning and zoning commission to rezone the south corner, or southeast corner, 2.58 acres of land from CP to that R4 RP planned multiple residence district, and also has submitted a preliminary plat for the site plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the request for a site plan amendment for the R4 RP planned multiple residence district to allow for the development of single-family housing on the 118 lots shown on the site plan generally located northwest of the intersection of south, or of East Shallows Road and Hess Road be approved for the following reasons. The site plan can be served by an extension of existing utilities. The site will create an infill development site within the primary growth area, as well as additional housing development options within the city, and the site plan is in conformance with a future land use map for this area.
Okay, questions for staff?
I have one, please, this is Thornsberry. So am I understanding that there'll be 236 homes?
No.
118 on this one and then 118 we did before?
No, this is actually the site plan amendment for 118. Last month, it was the preliminary plat that went through.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, other questions for staff? Okay, thank you. Okay, for those of you who wish to speak for or against this request, we would ask you, please come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record. And I ask that members of the commission also state their names before speaking to Okay. If not, I would go ahead and ask for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we close the hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And the hearing is closed. Okay, turn it back to the commission for any final thoughts, discussion, or a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the request for the site plan amendment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Carol and seconded that we, go ahead and we approve the request for the site plan amendment for the R4 RP planned multiple residence district. Okay, any final discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Okay, our next order of business under new business is a special permit. This is a request by Vince Kaliska for a special permit to legalize the conversion of an existing dwelling into a five-unit rooming house in an R3 multiple residence district located at 326 Fowler Street. This begins on page 29 of your package. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The property does not have sufficient parking to accommodate for a five-unit rooming house. The applicant has submitted an application to purchase the property to the south, which is owned by the city of Waterloo and contains a total of 3,650 square feet in order to bring the property into compliance with parking regulations within the zoning ordinance. The applicant has noted that he would hard service the area if he were to obtain that additional parcel, and all surrounding streets are classified as local streets. Sidewalks are located along the north and east property lines of the property in question. The applicant is requesting a special permit to legalize the conversion of a single-family home into a five-unit boarding facility. The lot, in, the lot is currently zoned R3 multiple family residence district and has a requirement of 10,000 square feet and an 80-foot lot width for multiple family or other uses, which includes a boarding house or rooming home. The lot would also need 2,500 square feet lot area per family, or in this, this case, a total of 12,500 square feet to meet density requirements for those five units. And the applicant will be asking for variance from the board of adjustments to the minimum lot width, minimum lot area per family, and minimum lot area requirements, even if the city-owned lot to the south were included. Parking requirements for a five-unit rooming house would be two stalls per dwelling plus one space for every room used for boarding purposes, or in this case, seven stalls. The building inspections department has expressed that if the home were to be approved for five units, the applicant would need to bring the home up to code. Building official Craig Clark did inspect the home with the owner and has indicated that the home would need to have a sprinkler system installed and also have the electrical box moved to a common area if the dwelling were to be brought up to code, building codes for a five-unit rooming house. Craig Clark did state that if the home were to be converted into a duplex, the home would only need to bring the electrical panel into a common area. Staff does not support the approval of the conversion of the home to five units, however, staff is recommending the home be approved for a duplex. It would appear that the home would not meet a minimum lot area, minimum lot width, or minimum lot area per family for a duplex, but the home is converted in such a way that a duplex would be more cohesive with the neighborhood in comparison to a five-unit rooming, rooming home. At third July 7th meeting, you actually heard the request and tabled the request to actually allow the applicant to walk through the home with city officials. The applicant has indicated that the property was a five-unit boarding home since the 1980s, however, no documentation of this has been submitted, and the site would not have met requirements for a boarding house then either, so it does not appear that the site was legally converted. Therefore, staff would recommend to deny the request to legalize a five-unit conversion, but would recommend the approval of the request for a special permit to allow for establishment of a duplex for the following reasons. The duplex would be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map area for this area. The duplex would not appear to have a negative impact upon surrounding areas, and the duplex would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area with the following condition that the final site plan meets all applicable city codes regulations, including but not limited to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera.
Okay, questions for staff?
Yes, this is Thornsberry. Under your zoning ordinance analysis, staff analysis, in the second paragraph, when you're talking about parking.
Correct.
It seems like you're double counting from the dwelling. Seems like the dwelling gets credit for one or two stalls and then the remaining rooms and maybe two rooms, I don't know, but it seems like seven stalls is overcounting some way for the number of parking that needs to be identified.
In our parking regulations, that is what is in place for the overall, for boarding houses or rooming houses.
In the code here?
In our zoning ordinance, correct. That is what is, I believe it is five, I'm trying to remember. It would be two stalls per dwelling plus one space for every room that is within, within that dwelling. That is what is stated within the zoning ordinance.
It's not under dwelling, the definition of dwelling in here for dwelling unit, nor does it say anything about parking under what a dwelling is.
Are you looking in the zoning ordinance? Is that what you're, okay.
I am.
It's under the parking regulations, which I believe is towards the back.
About three quarters of the way through.
Thanks, guys.
It's on the left-hand side, about halfway down.
Two parking places per dwelling plus one space for every room used for boarding.
This is Schrader with staff. So a boarding or rooming house is actually getting a break over what a regular residential unit would have. A regular residential needs two per unit. So if you have a five-unit dwelling, you would need 10 stalls, but a five-unit boarding house ends up needing seven, because you need two for the fact that you have a boarding house and then one per unit, so.
For every room.
For, yeah, for every room, essentially, that is effectively a separate unit within the boarding house.
Okay, the other question I have is, we talk about in that first paragraph under staff analysis, the additional 2,500 feet, square feet would be needed to meet the density requirements, because in the code it says 10,000 square feet minimum lot area and minimum lot area per family. And then when you go to the definition of family, it says, it, it, to me, it's incoherent. It says one person is a family. One or more persons occupying a single dwelling unit, provided that unless all members, plural, are related by blood, marriage, or adoption, no such family shall contain over four persons, plural. The provision shall not restrict children under foster care or exchange students. My point is, is that the rooming house is five rooms, like a B and B or a hotel or something like that. It's not a family dwelling. But by your definition here, which seems nonsensical, you're saying one person is a family. Help me understand that.
Is it possible that each unit can have more than one person? I actually had talked to someone who's used a facility like this in town, and it's more than one person per unit. And they were migrant workers that came, I just spoke to them about a week ago.
Well, I'm trying to get at the point of the definition of family, which then drives the number of square feet needed for the lot, which then require, you know, adds to additional requirements.
I mean, in terms of the zoning ordinance definition of one person being a family, I mean, it's, it's a one or two family unit. Let's not even go to that, let's just go to a standard home. One person living in there, by zoning definition, is one family living there. It, I don't know how you couldn't count one person as a family, because otherwise, would you get someone arguing that it's not a one-family living unit, which is what the provincial, principal permitted use says it has to be. So we had to define one person as a family, otherwise you could probably have someone argue that one person couldn't live by themselves, they'd have to have someone else living with them to be legal. So that's why, so Tim would be illegal, because he lives by himself. Sorry, Tim.
Thank you for sharing that.
Sorry, Tim, but, oops.
The point of.
He has a dog, though, so I mean.
Worse for me. What I'm really uncomfortable with is that this particular property is functioning as a rooming house. Five rooms that are, as there was stated in our last meeting, rented out to transients and temporary workers and students, so there's a lot of churn. It's like renting a room, and which was very popular decades ago, not so much now. But there is a market that this person serves with this configuration, and I'm, I don't know, I just think that we're not giving him the benefit of the doubt of satisfying the business need that he has identified.
Well, but from, this is Gustafson, from my vantage point. I understand that he is running a business, but we have to look at the human side of this. And what I keep hearing is, is that this does not meet code, that everybody, there is no consensus amongst saying anything else other than it doesn't meet code. These are the options that the owner has in order to make use of this building for business, but, and the fact that this has been used as a rooming house since 1980 does not make it viable in today's market. It needs to meet code. And so, the bottom line for me is, it doesn't meet code and I cannot approve it.
Although, this is Thornsberry, the applicant said he would bring it up to code.
But it still will not make code for a five unit.
With a variance.
Then we would have to say we won't listen to code, we were going to have to vary. And I'm with Carol, I think that's just opinion, I think that's a slip result, because if we allow it in this case, we'll have to start allowing it in many cases.
Often we issue variances, the board of adjustment does variances for putting things into public domain, you know, there was a, we approved a patio going out into the right of way, so the variances happen.
They happen, but in this case, this is dealing with, and I'll agree with Carol, it's dealing with the standard of living for people. And I think if we start cutting it down, I can see the duplex for the area, but I, I'm not convinced in a five unit. I think we have to have minimum standards. And I did speak with some officers I've run into, and I asked them about the area, and they said this particular place gets a lot of calls. So, this is my, I just think.
Jerry also has the definition of boarding house. Can we revisit that, Jerry? Revisit what we were looking at earlier?
Where does the R3 end here?
Well, the definition would be in the definition section, not the R3 section. I can try and turn it to it in my ordinance.
Under chapter 10, R3 multiple residence district.
That's not where the definition would be, though.
All right, where's the definition of boarding house, please?
Page five.
Yeah.
Boarding and lodging house, a building other than a hotel where for compensation meals or lodging and meals are provided for three or more persons. It's a very general definition. So this is Schrader with staff. I think what Ms. Thornsberry was specifically kind of calling into question was the minimum lot area per family. And even if you draw into question whether the minimum lot area per family applies to a boarding house or not, you know, based on how you're reading that definition, you know, I, I think maybe there's some open to interpretation there, but throwing that out, even if you don't apply the minimum lot area per family, the site does not meet the overall minimum lot area requirement of 10,000 square feet, regardless of how many units of a boarding house you're proposing to have. The minimum lot area to have a boarding house, period, is 10,000 square feet. The minimum lot width is 80 feet, and the site does not meet either of those requirements. Those would have been the same requirements that would have been in place since, I think, as far back as the 60s, but definitely in the 80s, when this site was reportedly converted to a boarding house. So it was not legally converted to a boarding house, there are no permits of record to convert it, and it didn't meet the lot size and lot width requirements, regardless if the lot size per family is applicable.
And yet, then you would say, okay, now we'll allow you to have a duplex? I'm not following your logic on that.
It still is short of the requirements for a duplex, but far less short, and there may be more indication that they could claim legal non-conforming status as a duplex, that it was converted to a duplex, since prior to the zoning ordinance was adopted. it was converted to a duplex since prior to, the zoning ordinance was adopted in 1969. There's not clear record on that either, but the records do call it a conversion. We just haven't been able to track when it was originally converted from a single-family home to a duplex, and when it was later converted from a duplex to whatever it currently is.
This is Anderson with staff. And, you know, as you may recall, one of the reasons that the special permit process was added into the zoning ordinance was what the city council, and I believe the commission, had concerns about a lot of neighborhood situations throughout the Waterloo community, specifically the conversion, an illegal conversion of homes to multifamily units, causing a lot of congestion, a lot of parking problems, a lot of parking on front lawns because they were not designed for those types of conversions. And so that was the reason this process was put in here. One of the reasons that we were recommending the duplex option was we also understand that a lot of these illegal conversions may have happened years ago. Again, we were not aware of them. We work with them as they come in and as they're brought to us. We're trying to somewhat compromise with some of the owners with the use of their land to try and help out. But we also want to do what's best for the neighborhood and recommend what we believe is a compatible design for the neighborhood to move ahead, as we want to see all the neighborhoods improve in Waterloo.
This is Morrison. If we assume a hypothetical conversion to a duplex, are they still going to have to have a firewall to separate it and bring all the electrical up to code?
The building official's in the very, very back. I don't know if... Craig, did you hear that question?
If we assume that the applicant's willing to switch to a duplex, are they going to have to have a firewall between the two units and bring all of the electrical up to code?
Craig Clark, building official. I guess yes. I would say, I'm trying to figure out, I was in the property, and there would probably be very little work to have to do that, but there could be some work involved to accomplish that. You know, they could use a shared corridor for the electrical. Right now, it's kind of set up. There is two kitchens kind of already in, one downstairs and one upstairs. But I think some work could have been, but it would be minimal.
How realistic is it for him to be able to put the firewall in between the two units?
I think we're realist, you know, to do a duplex, I think is probably very simple for the applicant. I think to do five-unit becomes largely, there's a large amount of money that would need to be done.
Okay. And also, in the previous discussion last month, there was conversation about the extra piece of land that would be purchased for parking. If they add the additional piece of land, would they be able to meet the seven parking space requirement?
This is Schrader with staff. Yes, they would be able to meet the parking requirement. It would still not meet lot size or lot width requirement, but yes, they would be able to meet the parking requirement.
So this is what I'm thinking. I actually am in favor of letting them continue as a five-unit because it's serving a purpose. There are people in our community who cannot afford an entire home. And for a short period of time, a room for a month, or 60 days, 90 days, 120 days, whatever they need, is really, really important. So I want to make housing accessible. Otherwise, we're going to end up with people living under bridges, and I don't think any of us want that. So it might not be the way that we all currently live, but I think that there are some people for whom this is important. The applicant did say, and in a minute, we can stop talking with the guy, have a chance to talk, but if they added enough parking for seven people, it would reduce some of the issues that the neighborhood's not happy about. I think safety is a concern, so an upgrade to the electrical would be reasonable. And then let them continue to function. It might not be the way we all live, but I think that there's a purpose to it.
And I totally agree with you, Leah, you know, that there is a need for this kind of housing. But my concern is, is that it is done legally into code. And if somebody can tell me, yes, that's going to be done, then I don't have a problem with it. It's just that I have been in too many of these kinds of rental units that, you know, are just slapped together, and people are just living in squalor because they can't afford to go anyplace else. And so they are just, feel like this is what they have to settle for. And to me, I just don't want to be responsible for seeing that kind of institution to be continued in our city.
This is Thornsberry. Last time, last month, the attorney and the applicant both said that the property would be brought up to code as required. The sprinkler system, and then there was something about electrical rerouting and whatever. And so that would make it safe for the people. And I, I'm in support of what Leah said about approving this because the, this, even though it, there was a conversion somewhere, who knows, in the 80s, a quarter century ago, this property became a five-unit boarding facility, being used over that quarter of a century by people who need that kind of living arrangement. I drove by the house today, and it didn't seem to be any big issues. There was enough, like, the lot is available, of course, for parking to satisfy that. I just think that, I agree with the city trying to improve and whatever, but at what expense? To take a, you know, the business model that this man has been using since the 80s away from him? I don't know. I'm just, not in agreement.
I have a question for staff, just before we turn this over. On a boarding house, it says that meals would be provided. Would that include hot plates per room, or does it, or does there have to be a kitchen? Because in the past, there was somebody who lived there and provided the meals to qualify for a boarding house. How does that definition work today? I mean, does that mean that every unit has to have a facility to cook? Does that mean access, that everyone can come and go to communal kitchens?
I don't know. Craig, does the building code address that? No.
And every unit either has access to a kitchen or a hot plate. So there is a cooking facility in each unit.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay. I'll turn this over to the audience. If there's anyone for or against this request, would ask you to come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. I'd also ask that the commission members also state their name before speaking to the microphone.
My name is Gary Poppen. I'm attorney for Mr. Kabliska. My address is 8110 Buckridge Road, Cedar Falls. Yeah, we were here last month. I think he's had a good background of this property. Mr. Kabliska bought it in 1990 from the Bank of the repo, and he bought it as a five-unit, and he's posing to leave it now as a five-unit. I understand the concerns about bringing it up to code. My point that I tried to make last time is that to make this a rooming house, and I think it's a rooming house, not a boarding house, I think it's slightly different, that he's going to have to bring it up to code. But when we went over to the house this last month, Mr. Clark, building official, and he told us that basically what we need here is a sprinkler system. And the electrical is adequate, but it's in a, it's in a room, and the electrical system has to be access to all tenants. So either Mr. Kabliska would have to bring the electrical out into a hallway or turn that room into a common room, so everyone has access to it. So he's got an option there. But the, the deal is, well, for sprinkler system, he's, has gone out and he has gotten quotes, and the sprinkler system is probably going to be $13,000 to $15,000. I, I guess, my client doesn't want to be put in the position of going and installing a sprinkler system for, you know, what is needed for the rooming house, and then coming back and saying, well, we can't get, we're not going to give you the special permit. Because he does not need, to talk with Mr. Clark, the sprinkler system for duplex. He does need it for, for the rooming house. And I says, it's kind of like, you know, do you get the permit first, or do you, you know, do you spend the money first and then come back? And, you know, we know we don't have enough square foot, footage. So our proposal is, is we want to buy the additional lot from the city. And this, this, and my assumption would be that if you would approve this permit, and then the city will not sell us the additional property, we're going to be out of luck anyhow at that point because we can't meet the parking and we won't meet code. If we buy the additional lot, and then we, if we don't install the sprinkler system, we're, you know, we're not going to beat code. You know, this is, you know, luck. Again, we got to do those things. But I says, the point is that we don't want to spend the money, you know, to do these things and then come back here and say, you know, sorry, we, you know, we're only going to approve for a duplex, because then we spent probably, you know, $17,000, $18,000, you know, that we didn't need to spend. The, you know, the property does have forced parking spots now. We would need the additional lot to make it three, you know, to, to at least have those three additional spots. So our assumption is, and asking for the permit first, was to make sure that we could get the variance. Then it's the understanding that we're going to have to comply with the requirements, which we're understanding is the sprinkler system, and either do something with the electrical to make it common access, or, or make that room a common access. That's, you know, you know, our take on, on the situation. And, you know, as far as the same property has been taxed, you know, I went back through records, has been taxed as long as Mr. Kabliska has had it as a, you know, as a two-family conversion. And I added up the square footage. I think, you know, there's, you know, it doesn't work real well as a duplex. You know, there's a kitchen in the basement, no kitchen on the first floor, kitchen on the second floor. So, I mean, it works, works well as a, as a rooming house. The question again is, you know, you know, the cost involved in installing the, basically the sprinkler system, buying a lot of the parking, and upgrading the electrical. But I think the finished space, at least according to the tax records, is, there's 1,930 square feet of finished space in the property. You know, a lot of these people, you know, are people who are looking for temporary housing. Parking has not been, you know, to be honest with you, a lot of his, you know, tenants in the past haven't had a vehicle. It hasn't been a problem. But we understand that's the code requirement. We're willing to do that. It's just that we want to know if we can get the permit first or not. Because if we can't get the permit, then it makes no sense for us to, you know, to install the extra parking and such, you know, that.
I have a question, sir. Have you talked with the city and tell them hypothetically, if we got the permit for this, would the city be willing to sell that lot?
Well, this is Anderson with staff. I can probably answer that. In terms of the procedure, so if this goes through the Board of Adjustment and the special permit is approved, by the zoning ordinance regulations, it would be a principal permitted use. I can't speak for the city council. It would be up to them to sell the property. But we would definitely recommend selling the property for what is a legal permitted use, as it is excess city property that could be used in conjunction with an abutting property. So, but it would still have to be up to the city council to vote that way.
So, just, just before, so if they denied, and so they were not going to sell, how would that affect?
It probably depends exactly on how the, the Board of Adjustment would word. I mean, if they, if they worded it subject to the parking being provided, and then it was denied by city council, then essentially they would still, like he noted, they'd still be stopped.
I have a question, a couple of questions, actually. Regarding the tenants who are currently in this, in this building, what's the average length of stay?
Right now, there's one tenant in the building, and that's basically for insurance purposes. I'd have to ask Mr. Kabliska, you can speak to...
Hello?
Could you come to the microphone, please? Sorry.
Ms. Kabliska, and I live at 123 Mohawk. Actually, the last was before this was all brought up. We're probably five out of seven that were longer term, a couple of years.
And then another question for you. How many of those units had more than one person living in them?
At the time, there was, in the basement, where there's a full kitchen with living room, bedroom combination off of it. It was a single man, his half-brother. Then there's another one just like it on the first floor. Then it turned out, it'd been the largest single room downstairs, had a couple, and the rest were single. And there's, at any given time, one or two can, comes up empty. And they have a running average of one or more for the whole year, all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That it.
That, for me, well...
I would like to just point out that the, this, when this, apparently this lot was platted back, way back in the, sort of in the last century. It was a, nine, it was the, it was 90 by 100, and, no, excuse me. It was 150-foot deep lot and 60-foot wide, so it might have met the, the width at the time. The back part of this original lot was sold off, and that's how the city acquired the property. And so I think, I added it up, that if, if Mr. Kabliska bought the additional property from the city, which would make it the entire original lot plus a little bit from the second lot, it'd have 9,050 square feet exclusive of the sidewalk and parking that's on two sides of the property. And I says, I understand, we don't own the sidewalk and the parking, the city owns that, but Mr. Kabliska maintains it. So...
I have a question. This may be a staff one. You mentioned, Ms. Bobbin, that each year it's been taxed as a two-family conversion. Is that how all similar types of buildings are, is it basically just square footage of the land versus the property not used, correct, according how it's taxed? Or is it taxed differently in how it's used?
This is Schrader with staff. It's not really a question we're going to be the experts on, but the tax is based on use, and it would be my assumption that a boarding house would be taxed as a commercial use, not as a residential use. So if it is being, has been assessed as a two-unit conversion for all these years, I'm guessing that is not the same as what it would have been taxed as had they known it was a boarding house.
A rooming house.
Boarding house or rooming house, that's the second time I've kind of heard there. From our ordinance standpoint, a boarding house and a rooming house are one and the same. I don't know historically what the distinction or the difference between a boarding house and a rooming house is, but per our ordinance, we would consider them the same thing, synonymous.
So if this does go through and approved, then that would change the tax status of the building, correct?
I would assume so.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. I didn't know if your client was aware of that, that it could. Why is, if it is taxed commercially, since there are not the breaks, I understood correctly, it would be, I would tax a much higher rate?
There would be a different rate, yes. And just, I'm not wanting to split here. My understanding was of a, a rooming house is where, a boarding house is where meals are provided. A rooming house is where there are no meals. I think that's the only, only real difference. And Mr. Kabliska, while he's at the property almost daily, he's not providing meals. Thank you. Anything else?
One more question for the applicant. Staff proposed, suggested denial, but did propose or recommend approval for a duplex. Is that something that you all are even looking at? I mean, is that...
Well, if it does go to a duplex, you know, he's going to have to get a little different tenetics. I think a lot of people he's willing to now can't, you know, you know, duplex is going to involve a little more of a higher rent per month. I says, you probably have to have, and I'm sure he can solicit different tenants. And I, I guess I'd like the option for Mr. Kabliska, once he finds out the cost of all these things, to either go to the rooming house, as he's been doing for the last 25 years, or to drop to the duplex. So, you know, and I do think that, you know, it has been taxed as a two-family conversion all these years. He's, you know, I think there's an argument that he's grandfathered in that that's not necessary, but I could... but I could see the situation, you know, say twenty years from now, when Mr. Kebelska and I and all of us are not here, and this question comes up again. I think it would be nice if it was in the record that it could be either, you know. So there'd at least be, wouldn't be this problem someone down the line looking to see if it was ever properly done and such. But no, our preference is to do the rooming house, but I guess we need the special permit first, then we need to decide if we can, you know, get the, nail the cost down, if it makes sense for Mr. Kebelska to do that. And if, you know, like if the city doesn't sell us the property, I think we're out then, too. And if we don't do the sprinkler system, I think we're out then. And I says, so that's where, and the electrical, he has some options on that, depending on what he wants to do.
I think that's why, and just finally, as a business owner, I'm thinking too, it's profit-loss. And I'm looking at with the duplex, it just looks like there's going to be the least amount of financial changes to the building. If he does go to the rooming house, the tax goes, most likely, they'll have to change the abstract. It will be taxed differently, plus you will need to put in quite a bit more. So I understand the appreciation of trying to, you know, bring back, recover those costs from going into it, but I'm just mentally going through just some of the figures that were given here. It sounds like it's going to be financially, either way, you either go the five and you'll be taxed in a different brand, plus all the expense of everything bringing up to code, or go to the duplex, which seems like there's fewer changes. Is your client aware of that? Because, you know, we were trying to get as much information so that when we come to an informed vote, we want to make sure that your client is aware that there's going to be some financial investment regardless of the direction we're going. And we just didn't know if he was aware of all those costs, whether it's a duplex or a rooming house or denied altogether.
Well, I think it's presently taxed as a duplex, it does a two-family conversion, is what it says in the tax records, okay?
Correct.
You know, there's, you know, just like the sprinkler system is an added cost, the parking is an added cost, he's going to have to at some point sit down, put pencils and paper, decide what makes the most economic sense here in this situation for him. And I says, but we, I just think it's, it'd be irresponsible of him to go out and spend all the money first, then come back and say, well, you can't have the special permit, you know. I mean, it's, you know, that's just where I think it's, like I said, it's Vegas, cliche, but it's the chicken for the egg, which comes first, you know.
I have to think that you would have calculated the costs, knowing that if he's gone through the building inspector, that you would have an idea already. Because I know when I make decisions for improvements or going forward, I'm going to calculate, and I'm going to go ahead, just got a vote this morning before I made a decision to add somebody on, so I want to vote, what will this be? You get some idea of, okay, here's option A and B before you move forward into areas. Because even if you get the permit, if we, if it gets approved, you're still, without votes, you're still, this is what's going to be required regardless of that. So that's why I told him to make sure he's aware of that.
And that's, Mr. Kebelska, I think, just got his, the sprinkler costs back like yesterday, and I think they gave him preliminary estimate of thirteen, fifteen thousand, so.
Is there any other questions for the applicant? Sir, thank you so much for answering, you're very kind. Okay, is there anything else in the audience that would like to speak for or against this request? So please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. If not, since this is not a hearing, I would turn this over for the commission for some final thoughts or a motion. And just a reminder for the commission, we did pass some rules that if we make a motion that is against the planning and zoning department, I understand that we do have to state for the record why we are making that motion or voting against it. Am I correct? That was a new?
Requested.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sorry, I did that bad. Okay. Final thoughts, motions? I move that we approve the special permit to legalize the conversion of an existing dwelling into a five-unit rooming house and an R3 multiple residence district located at 326 Fowler Street with the understanding that the building be brought up to code and that, which includes not only the internal sprinkler system and electrical, but the parking as well. Second. Okay, it's been moved by Jerry and seconded that this request would be, the request to legalize a five-unit conversion would be approved with the conditions that be, that all things be bought code. Can I say that the, it would meet all applicable city codes, regulations, et cetera, including but not limiting to parking, landscaping, drainage, et cetera? Is there any final discussion?
I've got a question. This is probably for staff. In terms of process, if we turn down, if the motion does not pass, is that it? Or does the commission have the opportunity now to come back and, I'm not, to readjust for the duplex? Since the motion's been made for the five unit.
I did not bring my copy of the admin rules that we recently adopted. I think there might be something in there on a motion that fails, that you've got the option of making another motion, but if no other motion is made, then the request is denied. It is just a recommendation, so it'll go on to the Board of Adjustment, regardless what the recommendation ends up being. I would say we should do a roll call on this.
It does change, it does however, change the threshold at Board of Adjustment, correct?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, any final discussion? And yes, we will have a roll call vote. So, a yes would be in support to legalize the five-unit conversion, and no would be against.
I would just add that I'm going to be voting no on the five units. You know, after hearing, one, it sounds like there's one tenant currently.
For insurance purposes, yeah.
Okay. And that folks are living here for a couple of years. It doesn't sound as much as if it's the transient nature that I think a lot of us sort of have in our heads. And that these neighborhoods, you know, and these old homes, typically these older homes have been chopped up throughout the city, to an extent that it is, it's hard to come back from. But it's certainly not an effort that we should walk away from. Yeah, with one unit, maybe there are other folks living in those units, but from what it sounds like, one tenant, it doesn't sound like there's a mad rush for these units that justify these sorts of, what I would say, lack of, be respectful here, but, hot plates, shared bath, no kitchen. I don't even know if there's, I don't remember if there was even an easement, an egress in that basement unit. So I'm voting no on the measure, because we've got to have some level of standard.
Ready for the voting?
Thornsberry?
Yes.
Gustafson?
No.
Hall?
No.
Morrison?
Yes.
Tackett?
No.
Fails three to two.
So now we can make a motion about?
The duplex, yes.
Can I just ask a point of order? Can we make a motion on something that has not been applied for? The applicant has not asked for a special permit to do a duplex. So how can we make a motion to prove?
How about if, could we make a motion to hold the application fee in advance until they reconsider what's just happened here?
We've done that before. We've done it before.
Yeah.
I think last time we tabled that instead of voting, when we knew what the destiny was going to be, to be able to hold it.
This is Schrader with staff, and that would put it in limbo if they're wanting to move the request on to the Board of Adjustment, but if this filing fee's on hold, that would presumably mean the request is on hold. I think, yeah, messing with the filing fee is messy and wouldn't advise it. On another motion, again, I don't have my admin rules with me, but I believe the way we, and I should have, sorry. I believe the way we wrote that is if a motion fails, another motion can be made, doesn't have to be made. If no other motion is made, then it's a recommendation of denial that'll go forward on to the Board of Adjustment. As for another being, motion being made, I think that is generally, like, oftentimes going to be the reverse motion. Oftentimes you'll see a recommendation of denial that fails, and then what? You know, a recommendation of denial that fails doesn't mean it's automatically approved. You'd need a motion of approval then that would pass. Changing the motion, I don't know, the applicants did not request a duplex, but staff did recommend. So we have seen that before, where even though it's not what the applicant is requesting, if it's what the staff is recommending, where a motion has been to approve the recommendation of staff, and it is just a recommendation, then the applicant can still move it on to the Board of Adjustment, still requesting approval of five units, even though the planning commission might only have made a recommendation on the two units.
Could we recess long enough to get the admin rules to see if a second motion's allowed?
Does anyone have their copy with them? I mean, otherwise, yeah, we can run and get a copy.
Someone want to run faster than Eric?
No, let's have Eric, let's have Eric do it, please.
Let's see if I can find it.
It doesn't freeze again?
Yeah.
Why is it yellow? We'll have to vote it. Did you read the whole part?
No, I think it's given that you didn't.
Just going to begin towards the bottom, is there something that we may consider that?
We have a tie.
Yeah. The wording in there is just regarding an event of a tie, or it talks about another motion being made. I don't know that it was specifically addressed on a motion. But generally speaking, a motion to approve that fails is considered finalized action. I don't know if it would necessarily be out of order if an alternative motion is made or not.
And so that alternative motion would be to follow staff's recommendation of the duplex?
It could be.
Okay, if there is no further motion, we will?
I'm not horribly moved to make it, but you would like to.
I'm going to vote for the five.
Thank you, Chris. We're going to go ahead, we'll move on, the motion does not pass. So this still, now does it go on to the Board of Adjustments? Okay, so this is still, it's a staff recommendation, and the commission, we have voted to deny it. However, it will still go on to the Board of Adjustments, and then they will review. And I believe they'll also have the notes from our commission meeting correctly as to why. So there will be some detail to show why we voted the way we do. And then I'll give you some time, too, to maybe get some more estimates. You'll have a better financial, you know, picture of what that would look like either way. And then if worst-case scenario, you could always come back down the road, try for a duplex. But at least you'll have some information. So I appreciate your time, and we'll move on, and we'll finish up with our final order of businesses. And that will be it for the special permits. Okay, our next, our last order of new businesses vacates. Our first with timeout is 5:26. The first one is requested by DW LLC to vacate a portion of an existing utility easement to allow for the construction of two new twin homes located adjacent to 230 and 250 West Hills Lane. That begins on page thirty-nine. Staff report.
This is Miller with staff. The applicant is requesting to vacate zero point two-three acres of utility easement located along northwesterly property line of property adjacent to 230 to 225 West Hills Lane. The request does not appear to have a negative impact on the neighborhood or surrounding lane used as known utilities that are located within the portion of the easement proposed to be vacated have been or are being relocated. Apartment buildings are constructed to, or have been constructed to the west and north within the last five years. The duplexes to the east were also constructed within the last ten years, and Mount Olive Cemetery is located just to the south. Overhead power lines are located within the area but have been relocated, and a portion of the utility easement is being retained for the maintenance of said lines. The applicant is requesting the vacation of that point-two-three acres of utility easement on the property in order to construct two new twin homes in the area proposed for the utility vacate. Therefore, staff would recommend the approval of the request of the vacate of the portion of utility, existing utility easement to allow for the construction of two new twin homes located adjacent to 230 and 250 West Hills Lane for the following reasons. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact upon pedestrian or vehicular traffic conditions in the area, and the portion of the easement being vacated is not needed for utility purposes.
Okay, questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this request, we ask you to come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. And also ask that members of the commission would state their name before speaking to the microphone. Sina, and turn it back to the commission for final thoughts or a motion.
This is Morrison. On page forty-five, I don't see any fees with this request. Is that normal in this neighborhood?
This is Anderson with staff. I believe there would have been a fee paid, it must not have just been marked in here correctly. If there's a?
This is offer price.
That's the offer price, so we're not actually selling it, we're just vacating the easement. There would have been a fee but not a sales price for it?
So not an easement fee of seventy-five dollars?
Right.
Correct.
Right. Okay, other questions for staff? Okay, I would ask for a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the applicant's request to vacate the portion of existing utility easement to allow for the construction of two new twin homes located adjacent to 230 and 250 West Hills Lane.
Okay, so a second?
Second.
Please, but moved by Karen seconded that we approve your request to vacate a portion of existing utility easement. Okay, any final discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
Here, our next order to vacate is a request by Kurt and Carrie Schultz. Vacate a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot by sixteen-foot, total one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square feet alley located north of 1317 West Eleventh Street. That begins on page forty-six. Staff report.
This is the Western with staff. The applicants are currently using the portion of alley as a driveway to their property at... The applicants are currently using the portion of alley as a driveway to their property at thirteen-seventeen West Eleventh Street. They want to purchase the alley so that they may create a permanent drive for their property. The request to vacate the unused portion of alley would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The request to vacate the unused portion of alley would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic. There's an existing portion of sidewalk adjoining the alley to be vacated. It would appear that when the Russell Heights addition was planted, the intention was to have alleys running east and west between Eleventh Street and Oregon Street. However, it appears that the alley, alleyways were removed from the plating of the Russell Heights first addition, which is the reason for the hundred-and-twenty by sixteen foot or one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square foot portion of alley. Uh, there are, there is overhead electric in the alley, therefore, utility easement will need to be, be placed over the entire area to be vacated. Uh, the request to vacate a portion of the existing hundred-and-twenty foot by sixteen foot or one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square foot portion of alley located adjacent to thirteen-seventeen West Eleventh Street would allow the city to sell an incomplete alley that has no benefit except to the adjacent property owner for the establishment of a permanent driveway. Uh, the applicants, if approved, would be responsible for the maintenance of the alley and sidewalks. Therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate a one-hundred-and-twenty foot by sixteen foot or one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty square foot unused plat, uh, unused platted, uh, alley to be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. And subject to, that a utility easement be retained over the entire area to be vacated. Are there any questions for staff?
This is Thorndesbury, I have a question. Once the alley is vacated, then is there a resurvey done that shows it as a driveway then? And then, you know, new assessment?
Uh, the property owner would then, uh, update the abstract to include this new portion. Uh, they could leave it as a separate, uh, parcel, or they could have surveyed and made it into one parcel with a new legal description describing one whole parcel.
Okay, and so is there a, a price that the city will charge for this amount of property that we're giving to a, a personal residence?
Uh, yes, um, this particular portion, since they will be owning it and using it, uh, we will need to come up with a, a price, uh, for that alley. However, this group does not decide, uh, price for vacates. In the application, they offer two-hundred, but?
This is Morrison. Is there any objection from the adjoining neighbor on the other side of the alley?
I receive no complaints whatsoever. I don't know if staff heard anything. Okay, well, there are some sign-offs in here in your packet as well, surrounding neighbors.
Is that page fifty-three? It was hard to read, so I wasn't sure if that's what that was.
Yes, page fifty-three.
Any questions for staff? Thank you. Okay, we turn it back to the commission for final thoughts or a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the vacate.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Kayla since second that we approve the request by Kurt and Carrie Schultz to vacate the one-hundred-and-twenty foot by sixteen foot, um, portion of the alley. Okay, any discussion? With the stipulation of the utility? Yes, with the stipulation of the utility easement would remain in place. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Okay, our last item under new business is a vacate request by Rich Penn to vacate a ten-foot by eighty-foot or eight-hundred-square-foot alley located adjacent to three-two-two to three-twenty-four West Fourth Street. That begins on page fifty-five. Staff report.
Okay, this is Wes from the staff. Uh, I'm going to need some patience on this one. Uh, things have changed, uh, about five minutes till the meeting started. So I'm going to read the staff report as originally, uh, written, and then we will go through some, uh, amendments. Originally, the request by Rich Penn, uh, to vacate a ten-by-eighty or eight-hundred-square-foot alley uh, located adjacent to three-twenty-two, three-twenty-four West Fourth Street. Uh, the request, uh, would, to vacate the unused portion of the alley uh, would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The request to vacate the unused portion of the alley would not appear to have negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Um, there originally was thought that there was a underground utility, uh, owned by Mid-American Energy. They have since stated that they were incorrect, and there is no, uh, there are no utilities in that alley, uh, particular portion to be vacated. Uh, the request to vacate a portion of the existing, uh, alley, um, would not appear to have a negative impact on the area as there are two encroachment agreements in this alley already. There is a five-foot encroachment agreement, uh, on the west side of the alley for a handicap ramp, and a five-foot encroachment agreement for fencing and post supports. Therefore, there is very low square footage for any particular uses, particularly vehi- vehicular. However, the fire marshal did, uh, mention he would require that there be an ingress and egress easement established over the entire area to be vacated to allow for the safe usage of emergency doors along both sides of the alley. Uh, therefore, staff recommends the request to vacate the ten-by-eighties, uh, platted alley be approved for the following reasons. The request to vacate would not appear to have a negative impact on the surrounding area. The request would not appear to have a negative impact on vehicular or pedestrian traffic in the area. The request to vacate is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and future land use map for this area. The request would appear to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Subject to, that a public ingress, egress easement be established over the entire area to be vacated to allow for the safe usage of emergency doors along both sides of the alley. And there does not need the utility easement, so you can scratch that from the recommendation. All right, clear, clear of two-one so far? All right, so now since, uh, that staff report is written, um, there were some concerns about actually vacating the alley. Um, the owner at, uh, adjacent to the alley, uh, JSA Development, um, expressed some concerns about actually vacating it because of access for the emergency doors, and, um, the Mexican store there in his building, JSA's building, uh, needs delivery access. Uh, so there were some concerns about actually vacating it and selling it to Mr. Penn. So what we've come up with is, um, we're changing the recommendation to a recommendation of approval of an encroachment agreement to achieve the same purposes as the vacate request. This will work in unison with other abiding property owner and for long-term redevelopment of the area. So an encroachment agreement, it would still be public, where we, we would just allow Mr. Penn to build his fence, um, in a ten-by-thirty portion of the vacated alley as opposed to the ten-by-eighty. So if you look at your site plan, uh, submitted to us today, um, there would still be a ten-foot wide portion that would be open so that if there was an emergency or there are deliveries or access was needed to that rear portion of the alley, there is room to, uh, walk and/or drive into that portion, um, so that the emergency doors would be accessible in and out uh, for deliveries or emergencies. Clear as mud?
Question. Uh, there was an issue with ingress and egress? How does that play?
Well, then, not anymore, because originally, it was understood that they were going to vacate the entire portion.
Okay.
Now, I was just, uh, doing the first thirty feet. So then there would be a ten-foot gap, so you can actually access the rear half of that alley.
Okay.
The remaining fifty feet.
So the request now is a request by Rich Penn for an encroachment of ten by thirty?
Correct.
Okay, any questions for staff? Good job.
Representative from JSA Development's here as well.
Hi. David Deeds, uh, JSA Development, also nine-twenty-two Mulberry Street. What, where we left it at, I think, is we, we wanted to be, have the opportunity to, uh, negotiate a mutually acceptable encroachment agreement for both property owners. Not a vacation of any of the alley at this point in time, which I think is where the change was attempting to do address. And if that's where we're, we're at, that's fine with us, just move forward.
Yeah, thank you for your patience, David. Okay. That's everybody, that's my husband back there, so I think we're good. Go. If there's any or no further discussion, um, I would turn this over for the commission for a motion.
I'd like to move that we approve the request by Rich Penn for an encroachment agreement um, to vacate the existing ten-by-thirty or three-hundred-square-foot alley located at t, at, uh, three-twenty-two to three-hundred-and-twenty-four West Fourth Street in Waterloo.
Second.
Can I ask for a clarification on that motion? I don't know if I'm out of order or not, I apologize if I am. But the word vacation still in there seems to, the alley is still being vacated, which is not the intent.
I'm so sorry.
Encroachment agreement?
Yes. An encroachment agreement in the right of way, essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there's a motion to have Rich Penn, um, have an encroachment agreement, ten-by-thirty portion, and that was seconded. So we do have a motion to table to change the original request and instead approve the request by Rich Penn for an encroachment agreement, ten feet by thirty feet or three-hundred-square-feet portion of the existing alley by three-two-two, three-twenty-four West Fourth Street. Okay, any final discussion?
This is Morrison. I'm looking at the pictures on sixty. Now it's really tight. How are you going to get a fence in there and keep it safe for people? I'm just thinking fire, emergency, everyone running. And the bottom pictures on sixty looks like I would have a claustrophobic attack in this alley. Please tell me it's bigger than it looks, because that looks really, really tight. To be putting a fence in there.
This is Schrader with staff. I'm not exactly sure how tight that portion of the alley is or is not, but that portion is not the portion that would be encroached upon. It would be a thirty-foot portion that is, starts ten feet out away from the buildings.
So coming from the dumpster view this way?
Yes.
Yep.
Ten feet out, they will, um, put a fence and some landscaping essentially to try and screen the view of the alley.
And would be also the dumpster as well? Screen that or enclose it, or is that? Looking in different area altogether?
The dumpster's on JSA private property.
Okay, I see.
So if, if you were looking at the handout, where it shows the shrubs, the dumpster would be just to the right of the shrubs.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So is it going to go with the existing leaning fences?
Yes.
So just, they want to bring it out a little where the fence already is?
And put in a little bit more permanent fence. That was a current, that was a construction fence for when the bricks fell off.
Okay, I get it now.
Okay, final discussion? I'm sorry.
Sorry, one other point, and I, I apologize, with all due respect, you are breaking all the rules, David. We would appreciate that the approval be subject to negotiation of a mutually agreeable encroachment agreement, um, as opposed to one disagreeable to just one party or the other.
Motion asks for change then?
Right.
Do we have the capacity to do that?
Yes, you, you do.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I will give a motion to adjourn.
So I will restate my motion, amend it, that we request, or approve the request by Rich Penn for an encroachment agreement of the existing ten-by-thirty or three-hundred-square-foot alley located adjacent to three-twenty-two through three-twenty-four West Fourth Street in Waterloo with the added recommendation that a?
Subject to a mutually agreeable negotiable agreement.
Thank you.
By the adjoining property owners, I would say, to clarify.
Abiding.
Agreeable by, yeah, the, the abiding property owners.
Okay.
I'll second that unless David has something else to add.
Okay, I'm going to do my best. Okay. It's been moved by Karen seconded that we approve her request for an encroachment agreement, ten-foot by thirty-foot or three-hundred-square-foot portion of the alley by three-twenty-two to three-twenty-four West Fourth Street, subject to a mutual agreement by the adjoining property owners.
Abiding.
Abiding. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Now, our final order is final words, thoughts, discussions? If not, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. I would like, this is Thorndesbury, I'd like to know how we're doing with donkeys and goats and cows and chickens.
This is Schrader with staff. I will try and start working on that very shortly. But it has not.
We have, I'd say this point, we've been in the information gathering stage. Now Eric will start to write up different options for how to lay it out. We found a, we found a plethora of different ways to do it.
I would like to say for the benefit of everyone, today is National Night Out, so after we adjourn, head home, go out, meet your neighbors.
I was going to invite everyone, we're having, our neighborhood association is having a dinner in the, uh, parking lot behind Westminster Presbyterian Church. Starts at six, we'd love for you to come and eat.
All right, well, thank you. And thanks for that reminder. Oh, it's great weather, so if you're watching from home, get out and meet your neighbors. Is there anything else, um, discussion items? None? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Karen seconded that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye? Aye. All those opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.